Call me the order, stand for the pleasure of the evening. The pleasure of the evening to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd. Here. Trustee Zupan.
Here.
I'll let it pay the motion. We go into the executive session on the extension of pending litigation. Will you move by trustee Carter, second by trustee Grant? Any questions?
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion carried. The motion to reconvene. Move by trustee Carter, second by trustee Grant. Have a vote, please, for all.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan. Yes.
Motion carried. I'll accept the, um, motion to approve the minutes in committee meeting of the whole January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Mayor, before you do yourself that motion, may I ask that under public comment, the very last person who commented, we need to change the first initial of his name from A to D. I believe that is fine.
Okay, um, that being said, I'll still accept the motion to accept the minutes, January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So, would that change?
Move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter. Any questions?
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I accept the motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Mayor, before you take that motion, I make a recommendation to make a couple more changes to your revised minutes that were presented to you today. If you could go through your business, we need to change the enumeration. So, A stays as it is. Would you turn to the next page where it says A dot one, that should be B, and the following should be C?
I accept the motion to accept the minutes, revise edition with the new corrections. Motion.
Second.
Will you move by trustee Carter, second by trustee Todd? Any questions?
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Next item of public comment. All questions and comments will be directed to the mayor each week.
Move, Marla! Marla, move! Hey! Marla, move! Move! Just move!
That language was like a hall for.
I'm not.
Remove him.
You're going to be so threatened by this movement.
It's not about being afraid, that he knows what you're gonna do. Can't have a gun.
He better be getting another mate. Let somebody get in your face like that.
Okay, our public comment, our question and comments will be directed to the mayor each week. May you comment on one matter. Business of village, you speak of loud one opportunity to speak for three minutes and may not engage in debate. How would you pass on your, I wish for all comments, and at the end I would just, uh, please state your name, listen up to the mic.
Committee, I will be not moving this discussion, I will be going closer to the head couch. Head couch. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like you to know that the dog issue has not been resolved. You know it wouldn't be. I am working with the chief, he did call me today. The dog was back last night at a quarter to ten P.M., running on my porch, running the cats out of my yard. Uh, the gentleman, uh, has evidently today met with the individuals, uh, one of the officers, met with the people that are in that home. They are aware that that dog is still running loose. They sent out officers last week to that residence to serve whatever. And, being that I have cameras around my property, I saw the officer when he got there, knocked on the door, they did not come to the door, so the officer left. Three minutes after he left that property, out the door they came, got in the car, and they left, so they were there. So, they're quite aware of this dog issue. And I understand that they are telling the chief that they're going to be removing that dog and giving it to another family member. Well, that was the same story they told last year, last summer. Now, I don't know, I forgot to mention to the chief today, when that dog is removed, I think we need to have proof that that dog is removed. There's also been another dog incident this week. So, we do have a major issue with dogs running wild, and something needs to be done. It's lost gravity for this village because these dogs do not have licenses or their shots, and somebody is gonna really get hurt. Now, this officer had to shoot again, so there's another shot discharged at a dog because we have not dealt with the problem. So, I will give the chief a chance this week, and hopefully, this dog issue is gonna be resolved really soon, I hope. Thank you, Chief.
Judy Cast, here. I am again going to ask, um, why our H.R. person is still being paid for negotiations? And I'd like to know when the negotiations restarted? And I also would like to know if she's gotten a pay raise? And if so, when and how much? And to put your stress level a little higher, it has been reported, and it has been on the news, that Chicago, the nasty crime rate area that it is, has gotten a forty percent less crime rate than prior. And the reason being, Mr. Burgess, is because they hired more police officers, and they have more people roaming the streets. If they're gonna do something bad, they see a squad guard, they're not gonna stick around there and do it bad there. And we need those squad guards to be, uh, on our streets. And I'd like to know why we're still playing around with getting police officers when we've got money on the budget for two officers. You never did explain that, and I'd like to know why that is. Considering the fact that our eligibility list is up in October, you don't have much time left. Don't even know if anybody on that list is available anymore. And you know how long it takes to get that list together, and the amount of money it costs to do that. So, I would like to know, uh, if possible, to have some answers, because I really get tired of writing FOIAs, but I will if you don't want to answer me. Thanks.
Good evening, Debbie Williams. I just want to make sure that the board, including the mayor, is aware that it is now a class four felony if you do not provide public records to the public. State rep Anthony DeLuca has introduced that, and it was unanimously approved. And I'm saying that because on February eleventh, I requested a vacant homes list. On February nineteenth, I was told that there was an extension required because there was a substantial amount of records that needed to be collected. On February twenty-sixth, I was told there was a five-day extension because there was still a substantial amount of records that needed to be collected. On March fifth, I received the vacant homes list. It was totally redacted. It was not a single address on that list, to which I mentioned to Mayor Burgess that that was wrong, that that should not have been that way. I should have been able to get that information, to which, to Mayor Burgess's credit, he said, "You will have that list on redacting in the morning." Thank you, Mayor Burgess, I appreciate that. I did get that list, but I'm saying this to say that. Do you, as a board, know that your FOIA clerk is not answering FOIAs properly? Do you know it's a class four felony? Because as a board, you all are responsible for what your staff does. Do you, as a board, know if it's true whether or not the applications were made for three months? And we have employees who may not recover? Do you, as a board, know that? Because you, as a board, are responsible for your staff. And do you, as a board, know that two years ago, we were promised longer hours at the village hall? And not only that we've not got longer hours, we've actually had our hours reduced by one hour for lunch. We also have a building department that used to be open for nine hours a day. It's nine hours a day, it's open three hours a day now. We have a full-time building department director with a full-time assistant, and it's open three hours a day. That is an inconvenience, not only to our residents, but to contractors who come from so many faraway places to come and bring a new home to South Village to get a permit so that they can fix this home up for a resident. And they come here and find out, "Oh, you mean I have to come, I only have from ten to twelve and one to two that I can do this?" It was open for nine straight hours in the past. So, I just want to know if you, as a board, because actually, you're responsible for your staff. Thank you.
Linda Washington, I want to say first of all, I am really, really disappointed in the behavior that I just witnessed by this trustee Tate, who is a village clerk. And maybe it needs to be a no-stand hour, maybe it needs to be a stoppage of post to let women know that they are not safe in the village hall. When I was a trustee, two residents in this audience began talking and having a verbal confrontation, and it ended up, they were literally almost fighting. When I sat up there, I talked to the men that were sitting up there, I said, "You all don't let them in to fight." They said, "They wrong." I got up out of my seat and came in this audience and got in between with another resident to stop two women that were gonna fight. Anytime a man gets in a woman's face and talks to her rudely and begrudgingly, like he wanna fight her, threaten her, that's a problem. And if this is gonna be a situation where you have men in a room, and you let a man get in a woman's face, and you don't feel a need to do nothing or say nothing about it, shame on you. I wish you all could be that diligent and give reports to the residents. Every time tonight, when he called your name and asked you to give a report, you would say, "Don't report." And been standing for a year and a half. We have all these unqualified people doing all these jobs, residents that just got up here and talking about poor services, pure communication. We talking to answering machines, we can't talk to a live operator. I mean, is this what the village hall is talking about? Is this the pathway to progress? Two more weeks.
Here is Kometal. I'm here again to talk about social media, but I just want to make it clear that I know you have issues trying to understand or distinguish between a question and a statement. So, I'm letting you know mine is a statement. So, at the end, when you go and answer some questions in a runabout way, you don't need to say, "You don't answer social media," because I'm not asking a question on social media. I'm just merely coming up here to make a statement. Since you all want to go on social media and talk about people and stuff, the, uh, you all have been talking about how your trustees don't vote the way you want them to. Well, that is not true. They do vote the way you want them to. Because when you asked me to be the treasurer, you all told me that Zupan had an issue with me being treasurer. And I'm not sure why, because she recruited me to be treasurer for our home association. But anyway, you said she had issues, but then you all also said you were going to talk to her and tell her to back you up. And so, when it was vote time, Zupan voted yes. So, don't say that they're not doing what you want them to do, they are. Carter had never been to a meeting. How did he come in the very first day voting yes to everything that you wanted him to vote yes to? And Grant, well, you all said you had voted. And you did. So, what can I say? They're all doing exactly what you want them to do, which is not what the people want. And those, and the people, the residents, were the ones that put some of you in there. And the rest of you, you were put in there, you know why. Derek put you in there because he knew you would say, "There you are, Derek." Thank you.
Bredean Hopkins. I had some questions about the, uh, this is the account table. Uh, on page one, I'd like to know, um, why does it cost over five hundred dollars to board up two one eight fourteen Carroll and two seventeen forty six Carroll? Uh, it actually gets costed over five hundred dollars, but it costs three hundred dollars to board up two one eight ten Carroll. I, I don't understand why there's such a difference, and I'm hoping you could explain that to me. Uh, also on page one, under the general button, um, there was an amount of four ninety-three eighty-eight for business after hours again, custom items. Uh, I'd like to know what is this event and what generated the cost? Uh, on page two, Comcast business, uh, I guess that's Ethernet, it's over twenty-six hundred dollars a month. I'd like to know why. Um, the same item dated two fifteen nineteen built twice in the same month for over twenty-seven hundred dollars. I'm not understanding why, what, what's generating that? Uh, now, on page four, I'd, I'd like to know what are intoxicators? And also, what is dry yet? I, I don't know what those are, I'd like for you to tell me what those are. And finally, on page six, it's something about, uh, safe built building permits. Um, I'd like to know if this is something that the, the village pays out? Or is this something that, uh, we receive in? What are they permits for? Uh, if I have any time left, I want to say this. I'd like to know why, um, with the, uh, my neighbor, she got a ticket for her garbage can being out as she was out of town. I, mm, I don't know if I'd quite get that, but, um, I'd like to know who she would talk to about that because it was brought in the next day, I brought it in myself. Okay, um, the other thing that's about what the lady was talking about, about the dog, it's a gray and white dog. I actually saw him trying to attack this man. I don't know where the dog came from, and I did call the police and all of that. I can't say if anybody came, because I'm gonna be honest with you. I went in the house. So, the lady is right, there, there is a dog problem. I have him on myself, so I, I do have a love for him, but you gotta keep your mind in control of him. I think we need a little help with that. So, that's it.
Uh, your last item that you said about, on page, um, did you say safe built, what was that?
It says, uh, it's on page six. Safe.
I got it.
Oh, you got it? Okay. Safe built permits.
Hi, Williams. Uh, I've got a question. The truck stop that's coming in here, I'd like to know which one of the wells are they gonna be used to water from? And what happens if that well runs dry? That they're letting the water out? Are they gonna be pumping the water out of those wells? What happens if the water run dry in the well? Is it anyway, or there's another well that we can say we're gonna use that we are sure that is okay to use? Second thing is, is who going to be able to go up to the police department and not and tell the people what they can and cannot do over there? Or is that out of our jurisdiction?
That's all I have. Kathy Beck, you know, am I okay or not? Ms. Williams, we ran out of time, but the report that she requested was dated one twenty-eight nineteen. Why did it take until March fifth to receive it? That's one thing. The next thing is, we need to, I, I have asked this question over and over again, and I know that we don't, policemen don't stop shootings. That's not my question. My question is, have you started the process to hire policemen? You keep telling us that it takes eight months or whatever. Let's get the process rolling. Second, we have money in reserve. If we get a dog catcher situation, we have empty buildings every year. Why not get our own right here in the village? It will make us money. We can pick up these dogs, charge the people for their dogs running, make sure they get their license, make sure that they are vaccinated, and if they don't, we adopt them out. It's a win-win situation. I have found here for that position many times in this village before now. We need to get these dogs out the street. There, it is a danger. When people leave their dogs behind, they have pets and love it. And when they're left to their own devices, they go back to, they go back to their wild instincts. Then they become running cats. And if you have a cat situation, I've seen it in front of someone who got hurt. That's.
Okay. Um, back off at the top, the dog issue, um, as we'll see with couch. That's an issue that has been addressed, and, uh, as you stated, the chief has talked to you. And, uh, right now, we're waiting, not waiting, but, uh, I'll, I'll tell you, I'll let the chief explain exactly what it is that he had told you and then hear right from here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The issue with the dog, uh, he, not only is this situation currently under review, uh, but also the entire ordinance is referenced to that, uh, the bottom of the letter that was delivered to the, uh, dog owner in question has a threat of arrest. Uh, the, the reference of which that arrest is made under, under the ordinance, has certain levels of which had not been reached until most recently, once we noticed that the ordinance required the additional steps. Uh, there's a certain number of violations just to declare a dog, uh, vicious or nuisance, uh, which we were able to, uh, meet that need, uh, the past, he was, he did. However, the additional steps towards the level of arrest had not been made. Additionally, uh, we've begun to put pressure, as I spoke with, uh, Ms. Couch, we've begun to put pressure on the owners, and that every violation now that the, the dog owner gets a citation, the owner of the property is also being fined and issued citations. We're trying to, uh, push this issue from either direction to kind of set the game plan uh, because, as some of you have mentioned, this is not the only issue. Uh, it's not the only dog in town. This, this will come up again where there needs to be a full game plan and protocol uh, to address people who are compliant, who are not compliant to this degree. I think what happened when they were putting together the ordinance, uh, they expected people to actually follow the law. And up until now, they had, but now we have extreme case where someone is just being a scoffer. So, we're gonna take it to that extreme. Additionally, um, there's other issues with, once we do get the dog, uh, in custody, uh, we're looking at, uh, the avenues of what to do after that. Uh, I have discussed, um, with the, the animal hospital that we deal with uh, in reference to their normal protocol as to whether or not the dog or the status of the dog. And the owner and doctor, uh, we are still, uh, we're, we're still discussing what happened at that point. But my, my issue is, we'll cross that when we get there, we need to get the dog, um, as soon as possible. So, but yes, it is being, being addressed as well as the other issues.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. George. Um, as far as the, um, H.R., uh, negotiations are ongoing. I mean, we're still in negotiations with two different bargaining units, so that's, that's ongoing, and no. No, they were, um, the H.R. was not given a pay raise. And as far as hiring officers, that's in the, uh, works as we speak. Uh, I talked to the chief, we've done, uh, uh, there's some things that we tried to do, but we're not on rule. So, we have to go and do it through the, uh, through the academy, which means we'll have to, uh, go through all of this and go through that and hire. So, yes, that process has started already. Takes, as I said before, it's gonna take about six, seven months after we go through the process. after we go through the process to get this person on the street. So, we've talked about it, and we're trying to prepare for other things that may or may not happen. So, that process has already started to hire officers. I appreciate the information that was told about these platform felon being a felon now, if you withhold that information from the municipality. The vacant home list, I cannot tell you, but you didn't get that list. And as far as the items on the accounts payable, I could address a few of them, the rest I'm gonna let, trust the grant addressing. But as far as the water surface, why are they different amounts? Could it be a different size for... It could be one sheet, many sheets, one side, any side. That's why the different prices are not the same. Everyone is not the same, so it's gonna be different. Why one is larger, probably larger than the other. The business after hours is something that we gave for the advertising and then also bringing together our businesses. And that's something that we've done before. We could do it again to try to get our benefits and our new businesses to come to the village. New businesses to come to the village, so that's something that we tried to do before.
So, regardless of Comcast, there are four different invoices here. November 15th, December 15th, and two for February 15th. The third one, the second from bottom, is actually the invoice for January 15th. They just typo. So, instead of 2/15, it should say 1/15.
Intoxication meters. That's one of the prior departments, or that's one of the previous departments? Police departments? It's self-explanatory, thinking that you go into it if you... So, if you ever had to use an intoxication, you probably would understand that I, myself, have never done. Safe building. Safe bills. For the building permission inspection.
Yeah, so if I understand this correctly, safe bill, they come out to their third party we use to actually do our, contract them out to do the inspections. And that's pretty much it. They pay, they kind of monthly, and that's the monthly bill for August, November, and December. That's pretty much, pretty much it.
Okay, and the last item, the truck stop. If the well runs dry in Salt Village, not only will the truck stop stop giving water, the village will do it. I mean, we have two wells. And we have three pumps. And if that well runs dry over on the other side, quite naturally, this side would kick in. Until that runs dry, that doesn't happen. So, it's not that if that runs dry, it will stop having water on the interface. Just like why we have maybe one or two wells that are running capacity. And it's not... It's not, I hope that the well does run dry. But Kevin, how many feet do we probably have to down to right now?
The deepest one is right around 500 feet.
So, I'm just, you know, I'm not saying that it won't happen, but I don't see, I don't, I hope I will see in my day that well actually runs dry. But as I said before, we have several wells. So, if one does, if one stops or whatever, the other one does kick in. It's like we have a water main. And the police patrol over there as if it was Salt Village, but that is Salt Village over that area where the truck stop is located, gonna be located. So, our police officers do come over there and patrol. If that being said, next item. Mayor's report, I have no report today. Village clerk, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Initially, I only had one report. Now I have two. And I'm going to start with the behavior of the trustee that's sitting to your left. I talked with you a couple of weeks ago, and I asked if I could move my seat, because he has become very hostile. And I'm not gonna say I fear for my safety, even though maybe I should. But today's... Please, what he did tonight? The anger? I even asked you, Mr. Mayor, to explain to him and to show him why I can't move over. All of the equipment, the audio equipment is right here. My knee is right there. I asked you, Mr. Mayor, to share that with him so that if I am to this side of my name, I would like to be behind my name too. It's not possible, because they retrofitted your audio system in this place. Are you hearing me, Mr. Mayor? As I am talking to you? I don't know. But anyway, tonight, his display of aggression is totally out of... Totally, he was totally out of control. When he banged his hand down, he banged it down on my wrist. So, therefore, I will be going to the doctor tomorrow. And who knows, the village may have their doubts. Now, people ask how can I jump up and run? Nobody is ever gonna make me jump up and run anyplace. Because I don't operate in fear. My God does not permit me to do that. However, I know how to operate and act once someone has mistreated me, and I have been. And I am appalled. I thank you, sir, for changing seats as quickly as you did. I truly appreciate it all. I tried to word this off, Mr. Mayor, when I asked if I could sit down there. I asked you that. Now, I asked to offset this situation by asking if I could sit down where the department head just said. You told me no, sit on up here. So, I'm back here again. And the violence that was just perpetrated on me is totally unacceptable. I am so happy that we have just a couple more months. And I am going to ask you, Mr. Mayor, to talk to that trustee, to see if he can control himself and have some level of decorum while he's sitting at this board table. Otherwise, if I have to deal with that again, this is not an empty threat. I will have this little short black bug arrested. I am to you. Empty. So, talk to him unless you want to have a major scene during your meeting. Control him. Now, trustees and anyone else that's running for office. The village has set up forums so that you can share with our residents all of the wonderful deeds that you believe that you have, that you can offer to this village. So, we're having a forum. And that forum is Saturday, March 16th. The trustees forum will start at 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. And the school board members will be from 1:05 PM to 2:30. And will be right here in the rotunda. Everyone that can hear my voice, you keep saying we need change, and you're looking forward to the election. Well, I always maintain that in order to truly vote, you need to be an informed voter. And the only way you can be informed is to hear the attendees' conversations, how they handle themselves under pressure. So, therefore, you would want to come to the forums, but not only would you want to come to the forums, you would want any and everyone else that you know to attend the forums too, so that they too can make very informed decisions when they go to the hall. So, I'm going to ask each and every one of you within my voice to grab one of these flyers as you're leaving. You know that it's this week. But I'm gonna ask each and every one of you to stop at some store, stop at some retail, stop at some restaurant, and ask them if you can hang this in their window so that the rest of our community can see it, so that they can be in attendance as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, who completes my report.
The village engineer's report, I'll read. To be with excuse, we had a prior subject that emergency came up. The report goes as follows, from Jim's article. Streets for the proposed 2020 street resurfacing program have been determined. And we are preparing a CDVG application that is due on March 29th. This application will require a resolutionary pass at the second board meeting this month. The elevated tank rising replacement project will be rebidded on March 26th. Hopefully, we will have more contract competing, and we will achieve lower pricing than the, well, I'm sorry, than the wind, that wind the project was bidding last year. Right. That is his report.
I have a question. Last week, Mr. Sir gave a summary on the... I think it was ordinance that was supposed to be passed this week. Last week, he gave a summary on the orders that will be passed this week. And I asked for some information, and it hasn't been provided as of yet. This is supposed to be... Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. I'm not playing you. Jim gave me the summary. I asked for additional information. I haven't got that information from Jim. Secondly, I'd like to know what area for the 2020 street project? What area we talking about? Do you have any ideas, what area that you... What about 2020 street project?
The 2020?
Yeah.
I think it's in the, I'm not absolutely sure, but I do know some of the areas. Paxton, all the way around Shirley, if you know that area, it's like a horse shoe. Over in Carolina State, there's some streets over there that they're looking at. And there's a couple other streets that they're, that they're looking to include in that. There's gonna be several areas, different areas that's gonna patch out to get to that point where we hopefully can get the funding.
In addition to that, I also requested a detailed ledger for the tips 2 and 3. And you gave me the budget versus actual. But on that particular report, and I'm hoping you go back and take a look at it. It has zero on there, so...
You're talking about two different things right now.
No, I'm talking about the...
The tip has nothing to do with this.
I'm talking about the $101,000 that was supposed to be paid out for the tip.
This is, okay. Right now, we're talking about...
And this has everything to do with Jim's report.
Jim had nothing to do with what we're talking about, the tip. That has nothing to do with that. I mean, this is, we're talking about this report that you asked about the CDVG and what we're gonna cover. I don't know how that had anything to do with the tip.
This has everything to do with Jim's report he gave last week. I think, do you think I said Jim's report last week? I think I started off with that.
Okay, so then you need to answer two questions? Okay, well, then maybe you can get Jim's article.
No, I...
But I don't have answers to what you're talking about.
Okay. I gave, in fact, I gave you a copy of the, the request, the information that I needed. And I also asked for information on the tip. What's the amount of the tip to the grade? That was last week. I also gave a copy to Jim.
Jim, what was I even talking about?
I know, I gave a copy to Jim. I gave a copy to Fedge. I'm sorry.
But we're not talking about that right now.
I'm talking about what I did last week and what are you talking? I want to put that in there, but I have no idea what Seth is gonna do. That's fine, I'll make it that.
President's report, Mrs. Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. President, rest of the board. First, let me start. Dr. Gould, you mentioned about the tip that you asked before.
Yes.
We had said, we, a couple of times ago, that you canceled at the last meeting. As I spoke with you before, asking, do you understand as well as the rest of the trustees in here that there's a lot of financial data that I'm gonna have to compile? I want to be here basically a month. And a lot of it's asking for, it's unrealistic to expect me to have that right hand to be in particular, but it is. Because as I told you before, I'm not giving information that you asked a question that I cannot explain. With respect to the tip, that information, I can get it to you. But as always, my door is always open whenever you wanna meet, with respect to that. Now, regarding my yesterday budget...
I'm sorry, you didn't get the memo I sent last week?
But if you also look at the email that you sent to me, I replied back and asked you what exactly I was asking for. Did that get replied back to me? So, I went on our meeting Friday to discuss what exactly you're looking for. Because some of the stuff you asked for, I had no clue to the same way you did. So, I did send back to you, and I actually I got the email from you like 10:30 that night. I got to you like 11 o'clock the following day. So, any information that you need from me, call me, leave a message, call myself, and I'll try to answer as soon as I can. But with respect to asking me information when I was not here, I don't think that's heard to ask of me at this point in time. But I did provide, as you guys passed up earlier, the question, the actual as of February. Now, I'm willing to know, because Salt Village is a total new system. Only thing that's not included, or two things not included. The main thing that's not included as of December is all the salary information, because that comes out of EDP now. And that's a process that I have to manually input and consider, which again, in my two days that I'm here, that's something that's time-consuming. So, that's a good nighttime project for me. But as far as other information that relates to expenses, that's in there. And I'm willing to assess those concerns that you may have. It was brought up earlier with respect to the APs, the Comcast. One of the problems that I can take on myself personally, whenever I work for municipality, they find ways to track money. So, that Comcast bill, the resident asked about that. Bill would be cut in half in the next month or so, because I worked with the IT person and AT&amp;T to see if that was a necessary expense. So, that will be changed. But again, that's one of the items that I need time to be allowed to look at and analyze and then go to the mayor and the board to make the decision on how to move forward. The other thing that was asked of me a couple of weeks ago with respect to the shut-off list, I'm proud to say that myself, the finance department, building housing, as well as public works, we've gotten the north side shut-off list back.
Can you speak up? We can hardly hear you back here, please.
I was saying, can you hear me now?
Now there, we got it.
One question I was asked a few weeks ago with respect to the shut-off list, because it was such a high dollar amount. As of today, I'm proud to say that the finance department, building housing, as well as public works, I've gotten the north side shut-off list down to zero. There's a few items still that have to be taken care of. But again, that's a work in progress. So, that's something I think we as a group should be committed on, that we have a question... So that's something I think we as a group should be committed on, that we have a question, uh, when at the, the north side. We're not going up to the south side right now because we have other things we've worked on internally as far as finances and procedures. Um, um, you asked me, that's what I think it was, perspective audit. The audit should be completed and to try to presentation within the next week or week and a half. So they would be here to address those questions that was awarded as far as the audit concern. Um, other than that, that's, that's all that I have, but just to let you know that myself, as well as the members of the finance team, I'm working on putting together procedures and processes in place so that any information asked of us will be prepared in a timely manner. So, and that, that concludes my report.
All right.
Can you get the copy to show?
Yes, I have any thoughts to you today. I will email it to you, see.
Okay, now, the force in the province, um, did you have anything else to say, uh? Fire Department, uh, Captain Sinnerwick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the period from September, I'm sorry, February twenty second through March seventh, fire department has climbed into twenty four calls for service. Most serious call we had was a kitchen fire in the variable departments. Fire was quickly extinguished with three families' wood displays. Red Cross was called to assist with temporary closure. The details have been applied to the fire chiefs new car and the lights are ordered. Our work should be completed within our, uh, ten weeks. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Please, Department Chief White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, for the period of, uh, February twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen through March twelve, the police department received, uh, four hundred forty calls for service. Um, the, during that same time period, the Saw Village Police Department had a total of fourteen arrests. Uh, also not listed, um, I will be meeting with the Public Safety Committee, I guess, next month, uh, to come up with a date. I actually have the date, uh, ready already for this month. It's just a matter of publicizing it for a, uh, community policing meeting. The first one will be the third, well, it will be the third Thursday of every month. Uh, here, if it's available, uh, this morning at seven o'clock. But we'll, we'll, we'll put that information out. The third Thursday of that month.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, the works, Director Kevin Wells.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, a few items. Um, the fire hydrant, the fire hydrant main valve and tee located at seventeen seventy one two twenty third place reported the last report, uh, was replaced. The boiler that was sent out was lifted. All affected residents received the boiler lift. Um, nothing else is going on over there at this point, uh, with the water. But, uh, during the event, we had to remove a section of a corrugated pipe underneath the driveway to, uh, finish a section of main with the tee. So we have to go over and replace that section left. It's roughly thirty feet of pipe. We're gonna do the whole section of the driveway because we cannot connect to the old pipe. Um, staff went out, uh, and cut some wet areas. We got a little bit of freeze towards the end here and, uh, the weather kind of warmed up in the daytime. But we took out a mower we have, uh, we purchased several years back here. It's for cutting ditchways and stuff that you can walk into. And, uh, we started over here at the village hall, the back retention pond here. We have a project ongoing with that one coming in the spring. And we also went out to our west tower, water tower on the other side of the highway. And next to that area, there's, uh, some high cat tower areas. It's a whole effect part of the project we're working on out there. We cut that area down. Uh, the next place we're gonna try to get into, which we might not have the weather to do it, would be down in two hundred twenty third Street and Murphy. Uh, also, uh, a lift truck, uh, we just received back, uh, about a week and a half ago. It was certified, uh, for the biological stuff and all the electrical portion of it. But during the streetlight repair, um, at thirty one twenty three two twenty third place, the arm fell off during the, uh, wind event. Uh, we got the arm back up, but during the coming down process of the truck, we could not get it to come back down. We finally got it down, but we had to send it back into the shop. So we're gonna be behind a little more on the streetlights and some of the tree removals at this point. Hopefully, no more than a, a couple more days, we'll hear something. Um, we're still doing small jobs at the village hall. There's always something up here, heating aid, air light, plumbing, something that's always going on in the village hall. The heat to the building started past its ten year mark, so it's gonna start having some of those issues. Um, staff also during that event, a while back, we were prepping a few streetlights. Uh, those streetlights are just gonna be put on. I just believe in the report here, the report we still have in, uh, in the process, but when the truck is returned, we will return for those. And that was on two seventeenth Merrill and two fifteen Place Jeffrey. Um, during a staff visit over, uh, our west water tower, we do, uh, periodic visits every two weeks at the towers. We go into the bottom of the tower, there's doorway. Um, the west tower is the one that we're currently working on to try to get the main riser pipe replaced. Uh, we walked into it, uh, a couple of days ago and noticed there was ice on the floor. Uh, one of the reasons why we replace the pipe is because it's, uh, starting to rot away. So that created an ice dam on, on the pipe. We did find, uh, one leak at the lower section and one further up. The one at the lower section, we will repair. The one that's higher up is smaller. We're hoping that we can get by, by not spending the money right now to throw it away. So, uh, we can get to the project, uh, date, which is about a month and a half from now. Hopefully, that pipe will be replaced. We won't have to spend roughly around six or seven thousand dollars just for a clamp, you want an old pipe. Um, also, uh, from the list we received for the extra money from, uh, the village, uh, I placed in order for the hundred eighty yards of, of the play safe mold. It's a certified mold that goes in parks. Um, part of the mulch, of course, most of the mulch will probably go into the existing park equipment that's there. But also during, uh, some of this, we actually are gonna order some new equipment and that'll be part of the, uh, fall zones around that new equipment. Uh, I've been getting a lot of calls about branches. Most of the branches that I've noticed are not larger branches. There's some here and there, but most of this is look, small sticks. Uh, we are not at this point, uh, able to go out in a special pickup. Uh, so we hope everybody's patient, but if you do have larger branches that are crossing anything from any village property or village trees, definitely call us up, we'll take a look at it, but I'm asking everybody just to make those piles in the parkway or stack them up. Uh, our first pickup is unfortunately, it starts in May and it's May sixth. So they can be placed out at that time. And as we reported, the north side shut off list is completed as of three twelve nineteen. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. E- economic development, uh, Director Phil Lewis-Wan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for the period of January one to February twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, code enforcement issued two hundred seventy seven citations and over one hundred notices of violation. Total fines for the citations total thirty seven thousand six hundred dollars and for the same period, four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars was applied for fines. A hundred and seventy eight notices, uh, to appear will be sent out for adjudication in April. Over six hundred eighty nine thousand five hundred eighty eight dollars was sent to the Illinois Comptroller's Office in twenty eighteen with only twenty eight thousand four hundred and five dollars being paid for the same period. Legalists being, are beginning to evaluate basic liens on the properties for code violations on property matters in lieu of being sent to the collection. Uh, as you can tell, it's becoming ineffective. Um, so we're working on an alternate solution for that. Um, we're working on updating our vacant abandoned home list, which after a cursory review, has significant deficiencies. Staff is working on updating our vacant abandoned homes and conducting property maintenance inspections on those homes. In addition, the vacant abandoned homes will be categorized and owners identify for each property. The board has before tonight a resolution amending section eighteen by adding article nineteen, requiring registration of default mortgage vacant property. Um, this will require banks and lending institutions to register properties that they initiate foreclosure as well as other vacant properties. The board also has before it a resolution authorizing the entry into an agreement with property registration champion to serve as the village's vendor to perform registrations on behalf of the village. As you know, the village will receive two hundred and fifty dollars for each property registered. Um, the vendor will be charging a hundred dollars of that, so the total will be three hundred and fifty. That's the total charge. The village is giving two fifty. We will begin implementation of this immediately after passage and we will be likely generating about eighty thousand additional revenue for the village each year. Uh, the board also has before it tonight a resolution authorizing the entry of an agreement between the village of Saw Village and Robinson Engineering for phase one engineering for roadway and rail expansion in the village's logistics center. This is being funded in large part by a grant through Invest and Cook for three hundred fifty thousand hours. Speaking of investing. Um, village engineer Jim Zarneck, our new staff planner, baggage jar, and myself have been working on twenty nineteen and a half of grant. Um, Invest and Cook grants are for transportation projects and we are working on grant for phase one engineering for Saw Trail and three ninety four intersection. We will be, uh, seeking construction funding, uh, through the next phase of the grant process through C M A. Uh, we're also moving forward on the Saw Trail Pathway Project. As you know, the village Steger and Cook County were awarded a grant for a pathway along Saw Trail from three ninety four to the Cottage Grove. Uh, this grant is awarded, uh, some time ago, um, but has been kind of in a neutral position for quite some time. The village at the time was going to be taking financial lead on this project, uh, until we renegotiated the terms of the intergovernmental agreement between all parties. So now Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways will be taking the financial lead, while the village and Steger will remain partners on this project. Finally, gas and wash construction has been well underway. Uh, I was recently out at the site. Material construction has been, uh, ongoing and really looks nice. Um, the state fire marshal has signed off on the underground storage tanks. The building inspections have been routine and you haven't had any injuries out there at all. Uh, they look forward to opening sometime this Friday. That is my report.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, now, the guy who gives your report, please.
My report was placed in the trustees and everyone's box this evening.
Okay. I just have something to add. You stated that you have resolutions tonight. I show ordinances. Which to me, a resolution that's what we're gonna go forward, we have ordinances.
I may have spoken as to what the contents of those were.
I just wanna make sure. I just wanna make sure. And also, um, do you think that you could actually send an email when we have a new business going in? Um, we're not always aware what the business is until we actually see it. So if you could kind of, I mean, I noticed that we're getting a new, um, cafe and then there's another business open. So if you could kind of let us know.
That, that, that shouldn't be a problem. So anytime there, uh, business licenses are issued, um, I'll, uh, notify the board on that. It's not a problem.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Reports of trustees, standing committee, and pavements, public service committee, request your ready approval.
Last week, I requested some information from, um, project engineer regarding the hundred, the approximately hundred thousand dollars additional from the investment account. Uh, of course, I couldn't get that information from, uh, whoever. I was, I was sent it to, um, you and, uh, the village clerk and haven't been able to get that information. In addition to that, I also asked for information on the, the tip for the hundred thousand dollars should have been a tip free. Uh, the money's coming out of that. I just wanna know what the balance is, okay? So that's what I was, uh, so then I get that I asked for last week and haven't been able to get that. Uh. Okay, well, yeah, you could email it to me. Uh, in addition to that, I, I noticed that, um, when we get ready, when we get ready to vote on the, uh, uh, was it an ordinance or was it a resolution? Okay, it doesn't specify the hundred and the approximately hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna do for the additional, uh, feasibility study. It does not mention it in there. And I'd like to know, are we gonna just do the three hundred fifty thousand? Or are we gonna do the hundred thousand for the fifty million as well? Was it a good? Yeah. So I mean, I just wanna know, we're supposed to vote on both, but just one. And, uh, in addition to that, I'd like to speak on, uh, the hospital environment, environment, environmental.
Use the mic, please.
Speak on the hospital, hospital work and environment here at the village hall. We understand everybody gets a little hot at times, but some members of the board are intentionally intimidating and threatening people when they sit up here and talk. That's a fact and we all know that. We need to be more patient and considerate of other people's, um, situations. And I ask, and you know, I get hot all the time up here, you know? I ask that we be a little bit more patient and try to, you know, talk to each other in a, in a light tone and get your thoughts out. There's no wrong answer. There's no right answer. You have your opinion, they have theirs. We should be able to speak our opinion because we're United States citizens. We have a right to speak and just without you don't agree with something, don't mean that you're right. And it doesn't mean that you can cut off a trustee every time they get to talk. We got, we got opinions and we should be able to actively ask for them as we go along. All this going on is when somebody talks, we need to cut that out. We grown people. And some of us are, and we need to, you know, cut, uh, cut, you know, act important. And that's the end of that report.
Question finance, trustee Roger Grant.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I can comment is that next Wednesday, we have our committee meeting here at, uh, the Baton at seven P M. That's all I have.
I have a question for, uh, trustee Grant.
Sure.
Um, uh, we just got a budget and actual, um, budget versus action. And I thought you mentioned about it. And if you look on here, it says, uh, tip three. It says, and I know this is wrong, but it has like a hundred, we have a hundred and forty nine million. I think that's.
Put my head.
Use the mic. Mic, please.
We can't hear you.
Use the mic.
And then I gotta find the main, uh, and I don't say anything.
It's not gonna break your voice.
And this is just for your edification. It's not for, you know, this is back from the last page. Uh, and it shows, um, we got like a, um, net revenue of one hundred fifty three billion. I don't think that's right.
Wait, wait, wait. Can you say one, one, one page?
The last page nineteen.
My last page is page six.
Okay, of the page nineteen.
I think, I think my pages may be out of order, but.
Okay. Okay, this page.
This, this is what I was talking about.
This is page nineteen.
This page.
It said one millimeter, four hundred ninety nine thousand, forty four dollars and thirteen cents.
It said a hundred fifty three million. Four hundred eighty three thousand, one hundred eighty four dollars.
Do you look at the top of your pages? It's different funds. So this is page seventeen under the general fund. But in page six, that's on fire and air and general, so that's. So if you go back first.
You said it's on page seventeen.
Yeah, there's two different nineteen dollars. Hundred fifty three. Okay, that's who that is.
And then, uh, you might want to find the page seventeen too.
I don't know which one, but you got two different nineteen.
I gotta page number one. Never mind. Well, you know, but it's so many things that you're gonna add, like, I'll just give it to you.
Yeah, so I just received this too, so I'll, let me know and I'll take a look at it, cause I have. So, uh, trustee, going back to page nineteen, so, so going back to page nineteen, when you said a hundred and forty nine million?
No, it was a hundred fifty three million.
You said page nineteen?
There's two nineteen's.
Last day.
Last day.
I think these are like out of order. I don't think some is not quite right with the ways. A lot of it has one page nineteen, it has a hundred and forty-nine million dollars. But, but, but I wanna say that that hundred and forty-nine million that you're looking at, it's not a dollar amount. It's actually a percentage amount.
No, 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 our previous page nineteen has a hundred fifty-three million, four hundred sixty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars. This is a net revenue from expenses.
Yeah, so I, so I think, so different pages, I'm looking at the same page, but I'm looking at the same thing, but on a different page. Looking at, in that column at the top, it says percent of budget, so that number is not actually a dollar amount, it's actually a percentage. So it's just formatted wrong on the actual sheet.
I got twenty-seven point two.
What, you're talking about the one below it, right? Is that what you're talking about? Right, so that should be a percent number two, not a dollar amount. So it's just a formatting error on the, on the sheet. That's a percentage. It should be a percentage, not a dollar sign. It's kind of misleading. Right, you see. Right, you see, you see, you see one, five, three column, whatever else you see, right? Then another column. So that's, that's a dollar sign, it's a dollar amount. It's misleading. It should just be one million, one, well, I'm showing you what I see. One hundred forty-nine million percent, but like.
What type of data?
We'll talk about it.
So we've gone enough.
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's just a formatting error. It should be a percentage and not, it looks like it's a dollar amount, but it's not, it should be a percentage. It's just formatted incorrectly, that's all.
Who typed that up?
It's not something that's typed, this is strictly from the civic. So I'm sure that there's some kind of, you know, way that's a format this, but it should be a percentage sign and not an actual dollar, dollar amount. Okay.
Let me know if the question is answered.
Yes.
Okay. House and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, trustee Tate. Ordinance Review Committee, trustee.
Were you giving a report? I know you were answering.
No, I just made the comment that being next Wednesday at seven, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next ordinance review committee will be April eighth here at six P.M. in the Batunna. And I commit, well, we discussed three ordinances, one is under review right now. But I have two ordinances that I'm going to present next Tuesday that are committee on the hold. Possibly the third, but it's right now it's under review. And that ends my report.
On the committee committee, trustee. Fair, do you have a question?
So I want to apologize for not having our meeting last week. Circumstances called me out of town at the last minute. But as the chief alluded to earlier this evening, we will be starting to have what we're gonna call chat with the chief on the third Thursdays of the month, probably starting in April, not this month unfortunately, but starting in April. Those will be here starting at seven P.M. in the road time, and we're probably gonna do them two-hour increments where he will be here. These will not be complaint sessions, but constructive sessions with the residents where they can come and hear him talk on different subjects each month. And he will also give different officers the opportunity as time goes on to speak as well. But we're gonna start off with him being the key speaker and picking different topics and advertising those throughout the community so that we hope to get a lot of resident engagement going forward. So you should be seeing a lot of information coming out on those as we get that actually advertised going forward. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Outreach, trustee Ronald Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time I had nothing.
Report to committee commissioners, senior advisor, advisory committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trustees, our next meeting for the senior vice council is Thursday, March fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. All are welcome. Our first senior lifetime of the year, the New Year's Day of the Thursday, March twenty-eighth here at the Senior Center. The Eastern Star is sponsoring, and they will be providing lunch for the seniors free of charge. Day night is there, we have first of the Friday in the Senior Center. Please come out this Friday and invite the seniors for beer with and other games. Medicare Awareness Educational Seminar is scheduled for Thursday, March twenty-first at the Senior Center. Please invite all the seniors out to hear about changes and updates to Medicare from ten A.M. to twelve P.M. Cedar has requested to come back to the Senior Center on Monday, April twenty-second to the date of twenty-third. This senior committee has given them okay for those dates, and they're just waiting for approval from the state. Also, we are working on scheduling our first casino trip of the year in May. The more details are to come, hopefully by the next successful board meeting. Also, we solicit your prayers and your help as we attempt to make our senior, Saw Village Senior Center the place for seniors to be this year, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you, and that concludes our report.
Thank you. Unfinished business. I accept the motion to approve the ordinance amending chapter six alcohol beverage establishments of the municipal code of the Village of Saw Village, Cook, Cook County, Illinois. We don't have that anymore. No. Because we did it.
Yeah, I think it's just a.
Just leave for the hours. Our new business, motion to approve the county's pay up on its investments, date is March. Two thousand, should be March.
March twelfth.
Twelve. Yeah, March twelfth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of three hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred five thousand, forty-eight cents.
So.
Move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Kyle, any questions?
Uh, this comment. I noticed that last week, we had a different format, and I think that the treasurer mentioned, or in our finance director mentioned that we had to do something with the upgrade of civic. So there's a different format on it this week. And I think that we used to see it as trustees by department almost, instead of by, it's kind of like we alphabetize it and then place it by vendor. So I asked them, hopefully you guys are in mind, to go back to that old format so that we can, it just, I think we're used to seeing it that way so it'd be clear for us to look at it. So that's just only a comment I have.
If you look at the very back page of your accounts table, you will see places for trustees signing, or just signing their reported history. Civic is also working on giving them the title for the powers that Saw Village do, but go for, you don't have one copy that will have pictures of your signature and explaining that you approved the accounts table. If you didn't, you would have the actual.
No questions?
Mr. Mayor, on February twelfth to twenty-sixth, I have a copy of invoices, so this week I'm wanting to do the same thing. I would like copies of page one, copies of invoices for Amazon Business. Last page, favorite, we spent three hundred some dollars. This time we spent like four hundred ninety-three dollars and ten cents. I'd like to know, perhaps copy those invoices. Secondly, on page two, where it says Comcast, we have two invoices on there from two thousand and eighteen, and I don't recall it being on the agent report, and I looked on my agent report, and I'd like to know why these things weren't on the agent report. Also, I'd like a copy of the invoices for, for those particular vendors. Also, on page three, the Dr. Strutter is here again, and we paying her for human resource services and community negotiations, but she has never been a proper holder of board for a pool. I like invoices for her. Also, on page four, I like invoices for Kiskel, Diller, and O'Donnell. This again, as the attorneys, well, they aren't attorneys, but they doing all the work. I like copies of their invoices for them because they have never been before for a pool. Also, on page five, I'd like to know, we just paid Olson and Skirp almost five thousand dollars since we paid Lap. I'd like to know what we paying Olson and Skirp for, so who is the attorney? I like copy those invoices. And also, on that particular page on five, we, for professional services or economic development, I'd like to know what we doing that for. I'd like to copy that invoice. Also, on page six, building permits inspections for same building. I'd like to know, yes, this is for different, I don't know if this is the same address or different addresses, but the thing is that they're old, and I'd like to know where they've been. They should have been on the agent report, but I don't recall seeing them on the agent report, so I'd like a copy of those invoices too. Martha, I left my copy at home, so I'll email you a copy of the request, you know, like a. Just, just, just print it, just. Okay, thank you. Okay. That's my copy.
Trustee, when did you, when did you get your accounts papers?
When I got my, I was there. I had my accounts paper whenever they gave it to me, that's when I had it.
All I did was ask you when to get your.
Whenever they gave it to me, that's when I had it.
Okay, that's. I didn't give you any of that.
But that's when I had it.
Okay, so you had two days to come in and ask about it, the invoices. And now you're asking right before.
We're not going back and forth like you said, and I don't have an option. I can ask for invoices whenever I feel like it. Don't dictate to me when I need to ask for invoices. I will copy these invoices regardless of when I ask for it. I might ask for next year, or last week. I want invoices. What's the difference?
Any other question?
Mr. Mayor, the mayor responded to trustee Ruth.
If she'd like.
She asked a question about why aren't things showing up on the agent report? So, so when we get an invoice in, and if it's not logged into civic right away, it's not gonna show up on the agent report. So what's, what's happening is, I'm not sure if maybe Kevin or whoever the department head is sitting on invoice, then they turn it in, and then we pay it.
Well, then we should have an invoice with the date stamp when we get the invoices in, so we'll know it's been sitting around for two or three, whatever, you know? So that's what I'm looking for.
I agree with you.
I need, I need a copy of the invoices, find out when the invoices came in, because if we get some invoices, we keep them two or three, we know why.
I agree with you. And so that's what I think that it comes down to, department heads, and them giving it to the finance director, whoever it goes to in the timely fashion, is that they're sitting on it.
Okay, all right.
Then the other question. As far as the invoices, the only department heads have been given time line, is that they have to split the invoices by certain time prior to the county's pay up? So each department that was given the email, so then we know the right because of what was said prior. All right. Madam President, please, not sorry. Madam President, please, call the law.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes. Motion is carried. Out of. Okay, the next two ordinances, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance for the village of Cook County for the business and business regulation, adding article nineteen to the title of registration of the property and vacant properties. Part of that presentation that we got last week, there's two parts that we have to move the ordinance for, this is part one. I'll entertain a motion to accept that.
So.
Move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Tate, any questions? Got a word?
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I entertain a motion for the approval of the ordinance for the Cook, Cook County, Illinois authorization to enter to agreement with that property registration champion, PRC, a community champion's company to provide services pursuant to ordinance nineteen.
So.
Move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Kyle, any questions?
I have a comment. I requested before that whenever we approve an ordinance or a resolution that we provide with the number, we usually, we usually use the copy we have, let's say the trees. You know, we just, you know, write in the number, so, you know, we do.
Are you following? You're just being.
Madam President, please, call the law.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes. Motion is carried. I entertain a motion to approve the resolution of the Wintersaw relationship to County authorizing the village to enter to an preliminary engineering service to graduate a rockman engineering for the payment of phase one engineering costs for the extension of the logistic road and rail spur expansion plan. Expansion, I check that.
So.
So.
Move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant, any questions?
I have a comment. Mr. Mayor, this resolution, this is a resolution, last week, they talked about three hundred thirty thousand dollars for the investment account. And then there was additional a hundred, so approximately a hundred some thousand for additional work that had been done. But if you look at this resolution, it only specifies the three hundred and fifty thousand. It doesn't tell what a hundred thousand dollars is for. It doesn't specify the amount. If you, it's not giving you a clear picture of, we're just, this sounds like maybe we just paying the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But we actually, but we actually putting out a hundred or more, about a hundred thousand dollars more for additional study, feasibility study, and that should be included in here too.
We have put anything out. It's not, I'll let, I'll let the economic director play it to his limit, but I'll let him.
Thank you. So the village entered into intergovernmental grant with Cook County some time ago. Cook County is actually funding three hundred and fifty thousand of this through the investment cook grant that the village bought. Out of that, the village is going to be paying a hundred thousand dollars. So the total amount of the project cost is four hundred and fifty dollars. If you remember Mr. Zard's presentation that he did here, it was a week ago, and he provided that presentation to the village clerk, I believe he did send it out to the trustees as well. He did specify that they were going to be coming in at about four hundred and forty-nine thousand arriving out, the total amount. They won't exceed that amount. The hundred thousand would be coming out of the tip funds. There's over four hundred thousand available tip funds for this project, so we have more than enough to fund that.
Well, like I requested before, I asked for the tip, I'm gonna just send the tip. Never got that information. Also, if we're getting four hundred and forty-nine thousand for this, then you should have something from CN that explains what their contribution is to. that explains what their contribution is to it. We're gonna spend a hundred thousand, approximately a hundred thousand dollars of our funds to, for rail spur and it's gonna benefit CN as well as us, but you're not telling, uh, well, whoever, um, you know, does not explain to us why they're not doing a monetary contribution to, uh, this project, okay? It seems like we're paying for it even though it's out of the TIF, it's re- reallocated funds, tax dollars, that's what it is. CNN is talking about the, uh, what they're gonna do, but they haven't put anything in there and write about where their, you know, contributions to it. That's why I'm questioning the three hundred and fifty, uh, thousand that you should, in this particular resolution, it should say what the actual amount is supposed to be, the three hundred and fifty plus the one, uh, part of the one hundred thousand. So what is it supposed to be? The whole thing for, or either put the cost in, how much the whole, the whole cost would be listed in the resolution. You sit it and make it more simple and, you know, explanatory so we come back and we'll say, okay, we spent three fifty and then you come back and say, where's the hundred thousand? We don't know, I just, I didn't, the resolution.
Right, so when, when the developer comes into a community to build or develop, then, um, don't pay for the roads, the, uh, water mains, the infrastructure. Um, most of those come out of, of development cost, okay? So if CN is not going to say, okay, I'm gonna give you, you know, five million dollars to build an additional rail spur. Those are development costs. So those don't come from CN, CN doesn't put out money to go railroads. They don't do that anymore. That's just something they, they stopped basically, you know, a million years ago. Um, they stopped building railroads across the country. So today, now, when you have those development costs, those development costs are paid for by the developer, which would have been DP Partners at this point. Since DP Partners doesn't, you know, want to continue that project, Cook County has found an interest in this project and so does the, uh, state of Illinois. So we're gonna be looking at alternate funding sources to expand the rail service into the logistic park so that we can develop the rest of that, uh, logistic park. So that's, that's the whole purpose of that. But that also, that also goes for, um, expanding the roadway as well. So we're, we're looking at doing roadway expansion here as well. So those are development costs that we're going to add anyway. So those are costs that we're, we're actually saving because of, you know, we're doing.
So it's, uh, the amount of four hundred and forty, uh, nine thousand should be, uh, addressed in the actual, um, ordinance. This is spelled out the amount instead of, you know, nothing's here. And not only that, we know we're gonna get additional, uh, uh, help from CN, or is that HEDR or something, or whatever it is?
HEDR.
HEDR, okay. They, they are not even specified in here. It's, it seems like to me, you just put something out there, they come back and charge us for seven hundred thousand dollars and we don't have anything in there.
Between HEDR is not between the village and HEDR. Robinson Engineering is the lead engineer on it, so they've, they've contracted with HEDR.
Okay, so the point I'm trying to make is, we don't have any information on it. We don't have any documentation or anything. This, or the resolution or anything, it has no dollar amount or anything. You're just saying, okay, we're gonna do it. That doesn't mean anything, you know? We need to put some figures in there and who's gonna be doing this. That's, that's my comment. We need some additional information, needs to be put in the, uh, resolution.
I'll entertain a motion to adjutant. Madam President, please, call the law.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried. Now I'll entertain a motion for adjutant. So. All you face? All right.
Oh, Lordy.
Oh, Lordy.
Where we going?
I don't know. I'm going crazy.